Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for January 22nd, 2013 is now called to order. We'll open with prayer offered by Pastor Tim Cross, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Would you bow your heads with me, please? Father God, I'd be so bold at the beginning of the year of 2013 to ask here at this City Commission Meeting that, Father, you would bring a spiritual renewal to our region, to our city. That, Father God, that there'd be an awakening, a spiritual awakening in this area, a spiritual awakening to love, to kindness, to gentleness, to peace. Father, that there would just be that awakening that would come to our region. Father, I would pray that we would awaken to righteousness. What's right in your eyes, not what's right in ours. But that, Father, that there would be an awakening to your value system. We ask you to forgive us for our pride where we've exalted our value system and what we think is right or wrong above what you've declared is right and wrong. Forgive us, oh God, for putting other things before you. Forgive us for our adulteries and our immoralities. Forgive us for dishonoring our parents and even his parents being dishonorable. Forgive us for our lying, our cheating, our dishonesty. Father, forgive us for our murders and our strife and our violence. Forgive us for our coveting and forgive us for the immoralities and the adulteries that we have let take place and that has taken place in this community. Father, I pray that you would awaken us to what's right in your eyes. And, Father, even awaken that simple thing that Jesus said that if we would do it would encompass all of your values, where you said that the golden rule, that if we would do unto others as we would have them do unto us, that all the rest of the law would be encompassed in that. Father, I pray in Jesus' name that there would be an awakening to that, the golden rule in this area, and it would help so much of what our city officials, our public safety officers, our city workers would have to deal with if people would just govern themselves by that simple golden rule. And, Father, I pray that you would awaken us to that this year, that there would be such a resounding awakening to that, that there would, even our city officials would be able to recognize a different tenor in our people. And, Father, I ask this in the name of Jesus. Now, Father, I ask that you bless this City Commission Meeting. I ask that you bless our city commissioners, grace them today, and give them wisdom in the decisions that they have to make and the directions that they may need to give. We ask for your protection, especially during this time over our public safety officers. Father, we ask that you protect them. Father, I know coming in, there were many on the highway after an accident there, and, Father, we just pray for their safety in this time and in this season. And, Father, we ask all our city workers that you would bless them and help them and grace them during this time of their lives, and we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Counselor? Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Turquess?
Here.
Commissioner Markowski?
Here.
Mayor Galvin?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Waringo?
Here.
Thank you. Well, we're going to have some honors and awards tonight, however, I think because of the inclement weather, the two individuals who we're going to honor were unable to show. However, as opposed to just shoveling these off to them, I'd like to read the honors into the record and to the public. And at the same time, as I'm recognizing these two individuals, I also like to recognize the many individuals also involved in our neighborhood associations as individuals, as other organizations and agencies that take to heart the best interest of the city and put themselves out there to be and to do what it is to be neighbors. And why we have one of those individuals right now in the audience tonight. Eloise, hello. Lakeside Neighborhood Association. I know Vice Mayor Spataro, very active in the Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association. And for all those individuals, I think this honor goes to you as well. But whereas Norma DeYoung, as member and president of the Angel Neighborhood Association, and her sister, Lila DeYoung, have served for the past 25 years, and whereas they've been great advocates of the Angel Neighborhood Association, and their work was vital in obtaining their 501(c)(3) status, and whereas they have respected, have been respected and admired by fellow citizens and have set a fine example for them to follow, and whereas I would like to thank you for all your hard work and services you have rendered to our community, now therefore be resolved that I, Stephen J. Galvin, mayor of the City of Muskegon, and speaking on behalf of the City Commission and citizens of Muskegon, would like to commend Norma and Lila DeYoung for their fine work they have done over the years making Muskegon a better place to live, and we continue to wish them the very best in the future. Thank you, DeYoung sisters, and thank you all individuals that worked their fingers to the bones making Muskegon a better place. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, city clerk, summary request, to approve minutes of the January 7th Commission Work Session Meeting and the January 8th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Gaming license request from the Foundation for Muskegon Community College, city clerk, summary request. The Foundation for Muskegon Community College of Muskegon is requesting a resolution recognizing them as a nonprofit organization operating in the city for the purpose of obtaining a gaming license. They have been recognized as a 501(c)(3) organization by the state. Staff recommendation, approval. Consideration of bids for Clay Avenue, 4th to 3rd Street. Engineering, summary request, award the reconstruction of Clay Avenue from 4th to 3rd and that section of 3rd Street between Western and Clay to McCormick Sands since they were the lowest responsible bidder with a total bid price of $132,345. Furthermore, if approved, authorize staff to amend the 2012-2013 CIP and increase the budgeted amount by $45,000 for said project from $100,000 to $145,000. Staff recommendation, award the contract to McCormick Sands and authorize staff to amend the budgeted amount into the 2012-2013 CIP during the second quarter reforecast. Agreement for service, blood alcohol draws, public safety, summary request. Muskegon Police Department utilizes ProMed Team Incorporated to perform blood alcohol draws relating to arrested persons in order to determine blood alcohol content. This service shall be provided at a rate of $75 per draw. The agreement shall be for the calendar year of 2013 and can be terminated within a 30-day written notice. This has been our current service vendor in the past and present. Staff recommendation, approval. Termination of joint agreement for cooperative programming and facility use between City of Muskegon Department of Leisure Services and Muskegon Public Schools, planning economic development. Summary request, a joint agreement was entered into between the cities and the schools on May 26th of 1998. The agreement outlined usage of facilities between the entities. Since much of the agreement is no longer relevant, termination of the agreement is requested. Staff recommendation, staff request that the City Commission terminate the agreement consistent with the terms of agreement. Donating obsolete radio equipment from Muskegon County Emergency Communication Services, Public Works. Summary request, authorize staff to donate radio equipment that is no longer needed to MCECS, a nonprofit organization. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to donate obsolete radio equipment. Permanent traffic control order, remove current 25 mile per hour speed limit sign and install a 30 mile per hour speed limit sign, Public Works. Summary request, authorize staff to remove the current 25 miles per hour speed limit sign and install a 30 mile per hour speed limit sign on westbound Marquette at or near Craft Street. Staff recommendation, approve the request.
Commissioners, you have heard the consent agreement. Are there any items you'd like removed for further consideration?
G.
Did I have a C?
G.
G, sorry. Any others? Commissioner?
I have questions I'd like to ask about C and the obsolete equipment, or F.
And F. Any others?
Item B also.
I'm consenting. I'm consenting. I'm consenting.
We don't have that many left. Any others?
We approve the minutes.
I concur.
Vice Mayor?
Well, if I miss one of these, please forgive me, but I would move we approve the consent agenda with the item, exceptions of item B, Baker, C, Charlie, F, Francis, and G, Earl.
Think we got them?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hood?
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor and seconded by Commissioner Hood to accept the consent agenda minus items B, C, F, and G. Any questions, any input? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Markowski?
Excuse me, Mayor. I had a question on B there.
We have to make a motion, get them on the floor before we can do that.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And now we'll go, one by one. We'll start with item B. You wanted that taken off. Commissioners, you want to make a motion to?
Well, I just wanted to find out.
We need a motion first before we can discuss it.
Okay. Motion to have item B taken off for discussion?
No, we already did that, but a motion to approve and then a second, then we can discuss it. Vice Mayor?
I will defer speaking first on this issue, but I will make the motion to approve the gaming license request from the Foundation for Muskegon Community College, Inc.
Second.
Has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Waringo to approve the gaming license request from the Foundation for Muskegon Community College.
Second.
Discussion. Commissioner German?
Yeah, just wanted to find out more in detail what that entails for their gaming licenses, because I'm not clear on that.
Your honor?
Certainly, yes. My understanding, I believe they want to hold some raffles as a fundraiser, and when an organization wants to do that, wherever they currently reside is where they have to actually get the permission. So because they're located in the city of Muskegon, they have to be recognized as a 501(c)(3) to get their gaming license, even though they may hold it, they could hold it in Norton Shores or any other community, they still have to get their gaming license. It's something the state requires of the organization itself.
Okay. So is it just a raffle, like?
That is what they explained to me, that they want to do at this time, but it doesn't mean, they can use it for other things in the future, too, that would be, that would fall within the law, you know, if they wanted to as well.
All right. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on item B? If not, roll call, please.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I believe you had taken item C off, Commissioner Turquess?
I would make a motion that we accept item C, consideration of bids for Clay 4th to 3rd by Engineering Department.
Next.
It has been moved by Commissioner Turquess, seconded by Commissioner Waringo to accept the bids and award the contract to McCormick Sands and authorize staff to amend the budgeted amount to the 1213 CIP during the second quarter forecast. Commissioner Turquess?
Question I have is, there are a lot of bids that came in and awarded to McCormick, which was a very competitive bid. We did have a company within Muskegon, if I read that right, at just $1,000 more, and don't we have a 1% premium or advantage for a company that's housed in Muskegon? It's probably a responsible bid is what we're going to hear, maybe, I don't know.
Mr. El Chatel, how do you do this evening?
I'm good. How are you, sir?
Good, thanks.
Good evening, everybody. I'm assuming you're making reference to Accurate Excavating?
Yeah, Accurate Excavating gave a bid of $133,700.
Okay.
And that's within the 1% of McCormick, which is in Twin Lake.
But McCormick, excuse me, Accurate Excavating is not in the city of Muskegon, to the best of my knowledge, is not in the corporate limits of the savings.
It was listed in the, there's two pages of bids, weren't there?
Yes.
Underneath their name, it said Muskegon. But they're not in Muskegon?
They're not, they're not. The corporate.
Zip code is in.
Zip code, but not, just the postal zone.
This one here.
But if you look, if you look at their zip code, it's 49445.
It'd have to be 49441?
Or 2.
Or 2.
Or 3.
And that's not always a guarantee, because 441 can also be Norton Shores.
That's fine. There had to be reason.
Mr. Mayor, if I could get some help here. I, in a previous career, did a lot of mass mailings in the post office, believe it or not, 49440 through 49445, the mailing address is Muskegon. So most of the businesses in those six zip codes will list their business address as Muskegon, even though in this case, they're actually located north Muskegon, or they might be in Muskegon Township or Norton Shores or similar locations, because they only, they, according to the post office, north Muskegon and Muskegon Heights are branch offices to the Muskegon Post Office, which creates, they are very particular in how you address bulk mailing.
Right.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions on this? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item F.
That was also me. I would move that we approve item F, donating obsolete radio equipment to the Muskegon County Emergency Communication Service, proposed by Public Works.
Second.
There was all kinds of seconds. Wasn't?
Commissioner German?
Okay, thank you. It was moved by Commissioner Turquess, seconded by Commissioner German, to authorize staff to donate obsolete radio equipment to the Muskegon County Emergency Communication Services. Commissioner?
I guess this is a suspicious part of me. I've been involved with companies where we used to give things away, and sooner or later, we got in trouble. Who will be supervising those items that donated? Who would say that we no longer use this and give it away? Is someone that has that equipment or is a supervisor of that department?
Yeah, the individual that I trust you have a copy of, you may not have. Daryl Hogston is the telecommunication expert, if you will, our radio expert, and he will be the one deciding those pieces of equipment.
Okay, so there is a supervision of what's going to be given?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item?
I think that's a very, very fine department, and I think we should definitely consider doing what we can to support them.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item G. Commissioner Markowski?
I'm not motioning for something we haven't quite agreed to yet.
You can always vote no. You can make the motion to deny the request.
All right. I motion to support G, permanent traffic control order, remove current 25 mile per hour speed limit sign and install 30 miles per hour speed limit sign.
It has been moved by Commissioner Markowski and seconded by the Vice Mayor to approve the placement of a 35 mile per hour speed limit sign and remove the current 25 mile per hour speed limit sign on Marquette at or near Craft Street. Commissioner?
So my question is, is this, is heading westbound, coming between the highway and Creston? But my question is, is what is the need to increase the speed as immediately following or entering a school zone?
Because it contradicts what's out there right now. There's 25 miles per hour, excuse me, 30 miles per hour zone. The school zone is completely different than this one here, I guess. If we need to reestablish the school zone district, we would have to reestablish that as a 25 miles per hour. But we have a sign that says 30 miles per hour on the opposite side going eastbound that this has to meet.
Okay, so even though you're going into a zone that's slower, they have to be the same on both sides, is that correct?
Yee.
Going both directions, the speeds have to be the same?
Well, yes, I would say so, yes.
I just wanted that to be taken into consideration, that you're slowing down immediately after this zone, so.
We've talked about it, that we have to reestablish those school zones that identifies the times and the sign, the school signs, if you will, that have to be added in order for us to reduce from the 30, the new 30 down to the 25 school zone.
Is the rest of Marquette, because I'm not noticing that there's a whole lot of other parts of Marquette that are increasing in speed, so are there any other portions of Marquette that are remaining at 25 miles per hour then, because it is a residential street?
Absolutely, yes. All the way, I would say, from the school all the way down to Seaway is 25 miles per hour.
So I guess that's my question, is between the highway and the school is really no different than after the school to Seaway? There are still houses on both sides of that street?
My apologies. When you said the highway, I was thinking the other side, Expressway, not, I was thinking 31, Expressway. I guess I'm not, maybe I'm missing something, I'm not following the question, if you don't mind.
It's just that there's, okay, so you have US 31, and then the only non-residential structure between the elementary school and where the 30 starts going eastbound is the fire station. So I'm not seeing the logic in increasing the speed in that section of the road when there are houses on both sides and we're right next to a school zone.
Well, okay, remember, there is a state law that prohibits us from putting arbitrarily speed limit signs that do not meet the conditions out there. That condition, out there, I believe it meets more than the 30 miles per hour. We could not have gone to the other side and reduced it down to 25 miles per hour, knowing that there is speed, that the speed is higher than 25 miles per hour when we do studies or when we did the study. We obligated, if the police officer issues a ticket that is not based on actual traffic studies, they're not going to be upheld if, the attorney can correct me if I'm wrong. So it's easier and it's actually more in line with the law to go to the 30 miles per hour, because that's what the traffic study shows, than to go the other way, which does not, which is not supported, if you will, by the engineering study.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. This is all predicated on a state law that I find reprehensible, which takes the ability of local jurisdictions to do what's best for their local citizens regarding traffic. But it is what it is. I was puzzled by this. I drive that street a lot, and then I took another look at it and realized the sign going one way is one speed limit and going the other is a different speed limit. But I share Commissioner Markowski's concern. I would not want to see a creeping speed limit increase. You know, this is a healthy neighborhood, this is a residential corridor, really until you get to the big apartment complexes east of US 31, and I think we need to be careful, because I know there are pressures placed on us by those large institutional uses to make Marquette Avenue more of a traffic corridor than it is. And I think that might help those institutions, but it would certainly harm hundreds of our residents who are on a residential street and invested, for most of them, is their largest single investment, the idea that it would stay a residential street. So I just want to make sure we're real cautious about a creeping speed increase on that street.
Any other questions? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearings, please.
Establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district at 316 Morris Avenue, planning economic development. Summary request, pursuant to Public Act 210 of 2005 as amended, the Hinman Company has requested the establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district. The creation of the district will allow the building owner to apply for a commercial rehabilitation certificate, which will freeze the taxable value of the building and exempt the new real property investment from local taxes. The school operating tax and the state education tax are still levied on the new investments. Land and personal property cannot be abated under this act. Staff recommendation, establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district.
Time for a public hearing. Hi, Mike.
Hi, good evening. I'd just like to note that this is just for the creation of the district. If this passes, we send a notice to the county, and they have 30 days to accept or reject. After that 30 days, if we don't hear from them, which has usually been the case, then the company can apply for the certificate, and we will have to have another public hearing then. And we do have Andy Wenzel here from the Hinman Company, and I believe the investment is around $500,000 in improvements.
Did his last name begin?
Andy Wenzel.
Wenzel. Mr. Wenzel, would you like to take a moment and just give us a thumbnail sketch of your proposal for that building?
I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the invitation.
If we could have your name and residential address for the record, please?
Sure. Again, my name is Andy Wenzel. I'm the Director of Development with the Hinman Company. My address is 1234 Hole High Drive in Kalamazoo, Michigan.
Thank you.
And we'd like to thank you for having us on the agenda this evening and considering the establishment of this district. The purpose for that is, as you're very well aware, I'm sure, we're putting a significant amount of investment into this building, into this property, bringing, subsequently, there will be a significant amount of jobs coming to the downtown and into the city that are not here currently. So we're, we've, we've been working on several different, you know, over the years, Roger Hinman acquired this property in 2006, and we've looked at several different options with the property. We've really been working hard to try to spur some revitalization to that property, and we seem to be getting some traction here. So again, we would, we appreciate your support, and we hope you would approve the district and subsequently the certificate. Again, it will not reduce the taxes, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. I know you're familiar with these, but it will establish a baseline for the taxable value, and, but it will not, it'll give us the comfort that they won't be increased, and we can use that as a valuable tool, we feel, in representing the city of Muskegon and trying to increase the occupancy of that property even further than what it will be.
Very good.
Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, a couple of questions. We got at least a ballpark figure of what the anticipated investment is. What's the anticipated, would this be new jobs into the city, or, I mean, what's the expected number of occupants? You don't have to tell us potential tenants or things like that. I know sometimes that's confidential.
Sure.
But you would have an idea of the number of people who might be occupying the space in question.
Well, I can tell you with the current tenant that we're in particular would be about an increase in occupancy of about 30,000 square feet, additional jobs coming to the downtown of, in excess of 40 jobs. We believe it will be far in excess of that, but we'd rather be conservative and be pleasantly surprised that it's more than that.
And one last question, if I may. I mean, you know, business is business, and I appreciate that, but there's been a number of tax appeals over the last few years on this property, and... I mean, you know, business is business, and I appreciate that. But there's been a, a number of tax appeals over the last few years on this property, and if we take this action, would we be in a situation, assuming that that baseline established is one that the corporation is also willing to accept going forward?
Correct. Correct. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question probably for Tim. When you say freeze the taxable value of the building, that freezes it, it can't go up and it can't go down. The taxable value of the building is going to be freeze, frozen, from local tax, it's going to remain right where it's at. So that means if it depreciates, nothing happens, but if it depreciates, does anything happen?
Well, my concern is, you go, not that the improvements will not cause an increase in the property, but.
That's correct.
It's my understanding it's a cap. Now, I'll defer to the officials, but that was my understanding.
It's a cap.
It's a cap.
Can't go up.
Correct.
Could go down. Possibly.
Possibly. Always onward and upward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the commission? If not, I'd entertain any questions from the public. In seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing and move to establish the commercial rehabilitation district.
So move.
I would second that.
It has been moved by Commissioner Turnquist and seconded by the Vice Mayor to close the public hearing and establish the commercial rehabilitation district at 316 Morris Avenue. Any questions or discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Good luck, and we, we hope to see less and, less, well, occupancy difficulties in the, in the office area in Muskegon, so, thank you. New business?
City of Muskegon Operations Management Contract, Smith Ryerson Community Center, Pastor Gregory M. Kirksey Picnic Shelter and Smith Ryerson Park Grounds, Planning Economic Development. Summary request, the Muskegon Recreational Center, MRC Incorporated, has been managing the Smith Ryerson Community Center since July of 2006. The management has been successful with many area youths, as well as others in the community being served. However, those involved with the MRC would now like to turn over the management of the facility to New Hope Baptist Church. Mr. Ray, who has been the actual site manager of the facility, will continue to be site manager. He is a member of New Hope Baptist Church. Staff recommendation, to approve the contract and authorize the Director of Community and Economic Development and the city's clerk's signatures.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we approve the contract to operate the facilities described to New Hope Baptist Church and authorize the Director and city clerk to provide their signatures.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Hood? It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to approve the contract and authorize the Director of Community and Economic Development and the city clerk to sign the operating management contract with Pastor Gregory M. Kirk, for the Pastor Gregory M. Kirksey Picnic Shelter and Smith Ryerson Park Grounds with, that's New Hope Baptist Church, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
And the community center.
And the community center.
All three.
Got it. Discussion? Mr. Turnquist?
I have a couple of questions. We're turning over the management of the, to, to the church and Mr. Ray, and the split becomes 25 for the city, 75% for the management group. Any idea of what kind of income Smith Ryerson generates in a year?
Well, we actually just received a check for the past year. Actually, the revenue on the financial report, which was July 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2012, revenue totaled 8,988. And we received a check for, now, not all of that, the pavilion itself was 5,080, and the check, check was 1,150. So it's not a lot, but it does go to help pay for, and we turn around and pay the utilities with the.
We pay the utilities, we maintain the park, the facility.
Well, they actually do most of the maintenance now.
Do they?
Yes, we changed that a year, two years ago with the contract, so there's not, we still go and check, or we get calls, and then we make sure that they're following up, that type of thing. But pretty much they're doing the majority of maintenance now.
Then it says somewhere in the write-up that the concession stand is still kind of managed by the city. We are responsible for renting or leasing the concession stand?
Yeah, I, I don't know that we have anybody right now. Go ahead.
Maybe I can, maybe I can help a little bit. The concession stand was a part of the renovation of the park that was done a few years ago, and done in conjunction with the football field. And really, we had designs of making that available to the Port City Football Club to use, and they've basically not, have not wanted to use that, so it's available, but it would be available to them, or we could make it available to somebody else to, to use as well.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, my concern is with the recreational center. That had gotten extremely popular. They were running lots of good programs. Kids from, from Nelson were walking all the way over there just to take advantage of the services provided. I just want to satisfy, it appears that there's not going to be a change in the services offered, but I just want to confirm that.
That's my understanding. It will continue as it is. In fact, Matt Culkema, I asked him about our youth recreation grants coming up, and asked if he wanted to get a copy of the application, and he said yes, so I'm assuming he will continue doing some of the program he's been doing with the boxing part of it, and...
So they're going to do their activities, they're just no longer going to be running the building directly?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. No, it has to be in context.
Any other questions?
Not really a question, maybe more of a comment. I mean, I just want to make sure that we are leaving ourselves the availability of this piece of property. I don't know if all of you have been down there, but it's one of the few pieces of property on that end of town that not only gives you access to the water, but is also a very nice green space and has buildings as well. So while this seems to be a prudent solution, I want to make sure that we're not closing off avenues that we could be using to generate income for the city.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there any other business from the commission? If not, I will open up to public comment. Any individual addressing the commission is limited to three minutes. I do have a request from Eloise Hefchi. Eloise?
Can I back up just a minute with this Smith Ryerson? July the 7th or something is when Miranda is coming to Muskegon, which is a huge, huge, huge thing. Is this going to stop that at all? Are they going to say you can't have it?
No.
Okay.
I just need your name and address, ma'am.
My name is Eloise Hefchi, 1960 Cutler Avenue, Muskegon, Michigan, 49441. I just have two questions that bother me and a lot of people. You probably don't have to answer them tonight, but think about it. What is the status of the building at Pier Marquette Park? I know we've had restaurants there, we've had whatever. I, so many people still think that somewhere, there's somebody that would like that, to open that up for a nice restaurant.
And you're referring to the now closed restaurant?
Yeah, it's a beautiful place, and when it was a restaurant, we used to, a lot of times, go down at night and eat and watch the sunset on the lake. You go down to Shoreline Inn and eat the restaurant there, and they're busy all the time. And I know we've had a lot of problems with the restaurant down there at the lake. I just wish that some of you would do some deep thinking on it. My second thing is, are we really working as hard as we can to get the Milwaukee Clipper a permanent home? It's been an orphan long enough. Those people work hours and hours and hours refurbishing it. It's a beautiful thing, and it's a gem, and I just wish that somehow we could really get something nailed down on that. And I thank you, and I appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Eloise.
Mr. Mayor, could I say one? On, on the Clipper, because there are a lot of people who are very concerned about that topic. I mean, the other one, we're kind of, we have to let that process play out, but on two separate occasions, the city of Muskegon offered a lease for Hart Shore Marina for placement downtown for the Clipper, and I believe the Waterways Commission basically denied that possibility. I know that the Clipper people are working with the Muskegon County regarding birthing the Clipper at Heritage Landing, and there's been a couple of different proposals made in that regard. I really think if people are passionate about the Clipper and want that downtown, that contacting your county commissioner and asking them to support the Clipper's request would have a positive effect. Because I agree, that's been orphaned too long, and one way or another, there needs to be a resolution. And given the other, I, I'm pretty familiar with a lot of the efforts that have been made to find locations downtown, and that seems to be the, the one that has the most reasonable possibility of actually being done. And so I, I just would urge people to contact their county commissioner if they, they support that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Randy Vanderwhite?
Yes.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Just need your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Randy Vanderwhite. I live at 1132 Peck Street. And I apologize if I'm going to abuse any of your time here, because I did not contact a staff person to find out if, if maybe this is unnecessary. But by terminating the joint agreement between the city and the Muskegon Public Schools, I'm wondering, is there already a new agreement in place, or will there be a new agreement between the city and the schools for things such as the winter recreation program, basketball program that's taking place?
I mean, the, I think the answer is no and no. We'll take those on a case-by-case basis, and with respect to the winter programs, we have contracted with the schools for that program and others as well.
Okay, so there is an agreement right now that's going on for this winter, and will kind of, like you said, be case-by-case?
Right.
Okay, that's great. I just want to make sure, because I know that those are very well attended, and I would hate to see.
We're not stopping programs by virtue of terminating this agreement.
Okay. That's what I just wanted to be clear on. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that'd like to address the commission? If not, I'd entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner Waringo, to adjourn. All in favor? Any opposed? No opposed? Well, then, let's boogie.